Twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, meeting of the City Council of the City of Fredericksburg. We will be led in invocation tonight by Councilor Matt Matthew J. Kelly, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand if you wish.
Most merciful Father, please comfort those in distress and pain. Bring peace to those in conflict. Consol those who have lost friends or family members. Tonight, help us make decisions that benefit all in our community, and always remind us that we are here to serve and not be served. Protect our men and women in uniform, both home and abroad, and keep them safe and their families safe. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Councilor Brad Ellis is in traffic trying to make his way here, in case you're noticing the empty seat. We have two presentations tonight. We have a proclamation for the National Association of Letter Carriers Stampard Hunger National Food Drive, and I would like to call forward Paula Scheneman, Glenna Tate, Evelyn Heron, Bob Gagne, and Hope Mauerl, and any other letter carriers who might be present. Thank you so much for being here and for all that you do. We have a proclamation, National Association of Letter Carriers Stampard Hunger National Food Drive, May ninth, two thousand and fifteen. Whereas every second Saturday in May, letter carriers in more than ten thousand cities and towns across America collect the goodness and compassion of their postal customers who participate in the National Association of Letter Carriers Stampard Hunger National Food Drive, the largest one-day food drive in the nation. And whereas there are numerous hungry men, women, and children in our community, and whereas these letter carriers desire to assist our community by providing a means to obtain food for those who are hungry, and whereas the National Association of Letter Carriers, the United States Postal Service, and the AFL-CIO have joined together in a food drive to collect non-perishable goods, and whereas on May ninth, two thousand and fifteen, letter carriers will pick up non-perishable food donations left by mailboxes and in post offices and deliver them to local community food banks, pantries, and shelters. Now therefore, I, Mary Catherine Greenlaw, Mayor of the City of Fredericksburg, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May ninth, two thousand and fifteen, as National Association of Letter Carriers Stampard Hunger National Food Drive Day. And I further ask for an abundance of community participation in this commendable effort, and indeed it is commendable. And if anybody sees the community, you do, every house in town. So, thank you, thank you so very much. Does anyone want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Appreciate your time, and this proclamation will help promote our event on May the ninth. Last year, the letter carriers from Fredericksburg and surrounding areas joined together and collected over seventy-two thousand pounds of food. This, the whole, seventy-two thousand pounds went to Fredericksburg Area Food Bank, so it stayed in the area. It's just not the city of Fredericksburg, the Fredericksburg office. It's all the surrounding counties. So, it's quite a few of us that are involved. I'd like to thank all the carriers. Without the carriers, there would not be a drive. And all the customers, all, everyone, whoever's got a mailbox helped out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Indeed. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, is that Dana?
Yes.
This is Dana Quine. She's from the Fredericksburg area.
Good thing.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. And Mr. Ellis was the one who called our attention to it.
We will when he makes it here. We have another proclamation. Is Opal Sarapa? Are there other folks from the Mental Health Association with you? Please come forward. Elaine Arnold, yes. Nice, great. This is a proclamation for Mental Health Month, May two thousand and fifteen. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in the nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore, I, Mary Catherine Greenlaw, Mayor of the City of Fredericksburg, do hereby proclaim May two thousand and fifteen as Mental Health Month, and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Fredericksburg to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate, accessible, and person-centered services for all people with mental health conditions. Thank you, and I was at one time a very active member of the Mental Health Association here. I know all the good advocacy you have done to see that adequate services exist in our community.
Hi, my name is Elaine Arnold, and I'm the acting president of our local NAMI chapter. And we do meet every Wednesday on the first Wednesday of the month at the Kenmore Club. And we want to thank Opal for bringing our attention to this matter and being an example for all of us to help each other and to know that through the spirit and the abilities of all of us together, we can overcome a lot of things.
Thank you. Item number four is the time in our meeting when we normally would have public hearings. We do not have any public hearings scheduled tonight. Officer Butterfield, I thank you for being with us this evening. We now have time for comments from the public. The City Council provides this opportunity each regular meeting for comments from citizens who have signed up to speak before the start of the meeting. To be fair to everyone, please observe the five-minute time limit and yield the floor when the clerk of council indicates that your time has expired. We have two speakers tonight. The first is Roy Perry.
Thank you very much. My name is Roy Perry, and...
Mr. Perry, would you see that the microphone is on? The green light should be lit. Just push the button, just push.
It is on, I believe.
Good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
April twenty-ninth, eighteen sixty-three, the Federal Sixth Corps, under the command of General John Cedric, crossed the Rappahannock River, beginning the Second Battle of Fredericksburg and Chancellorsville. As fighting escalated, May third, at Salem Church, a second assault was also taking place against Confederates who were positioned along the stone wall at Marie's Heights. It should be noted that of the twelve thousand seven hundred federal casualties which took place during the December campaign of eighteen sixty-two, two-thirds of those accounts occurred along the same wall. However, this time, a critical mistake was made by the Southern Army. Confederate General William Barksdale states, "Upon the pretext of taking care of their wounded, the enemy asked for a flag of truce after the second assault on Marie's Hill, which was granted by Colonel Griffin, and thus, the weakness of our force at that point was discovered. Immediately, an attack was made by the Federal Army, which allowed them to take the heights." Later, Barksdale wrote, "A more heroic struggle was never made by a mere handful of men against overwhelming odds." A northern account reads, "Many of this noble little band resisteth to the death, with clubs, guns, even after vast hordes had swept over and around the walls." This force was twenty thousand men. The photograph taken along Sunken Road after the battle is a vivid memorial of those who were left in the trenches from the Eighteenth and the Twenty-first Mississippi Infantry on that day. By early morning, May fourth, Cedric's Sixth Corps had moved its army closer to Salem Church, leaving a small force behind to protect Marie's Heights. This action ultimately allowed Brigadier Generals Barksdale and Gordon the ability to retake the heights with little opposition. With the heights back in Confederate hands, Jubal Early was personally ordered by Robert E. Lee to confront the Sixth Corps in an area that extends between Idlewild and Cowan Boulevard. On the morning of May fourth, Brigadier General William Smith's brigade probed the federal line along Plank Road, only to find that it was well-protected. At six p.m., General Hooks, Hayes, and Gordon launched a second attack, which forced the Vermont Brigade, under the command of Lewis Grant, to fall back and reposition on the heights behind the Smith Run adjacent to Cowan Boulevard. With the sun in their eyes, facing Grant's well-positioned army, the bloodbath began. In a matter of hours, dusk, eight hundred and forty-six Confederates from Early's division would either be killed or wounded at Smith Run. Brigadier General Gordon was able to make a flank attack, which pushed the Vermont Brigade to Fall Hill, but as a result of Early's division being hindered by the Vermont Brigade, Cedric's Sixth Corps was able to retreat across the Rappahannock River at Banksport in the early hours of May fifth. I would like to thank the City Council for allowing the placement of a memorial at Smith Run to remember the sacrifice and loss of life which occurred that day, May fourth, eighteen sixty-three. I also would like to invite the council and everyone who is listening to a dedication of this memorial, which will be held this Saturday, May second, at ten o'clock a.m. at Smith Run on Cowan Boulevard. The city has actually closed Cowan, the lane closest to the memorial, for parking, so parking will be easy. And I'm really grateful to you guys. You guys have just gone over backwards to help us. Matt Kelly, Eric Nelson, Doug Fawcett, Russell Brown, David Knight, along with the Police Department, the Evergreens, all who contributed toward this memorial. Thank you so much for making this happen. I really, truly, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate it.
Well, Mr. Perry, we appreciate you, because it certainly wouldn't have happened if you hadn't persevered with it, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Marilyn Brown.
My name is Ms. Marilyn Brown. I live on P.O. 271, Ladiesville, Virginia, 22501. I hear tonight, testified, the Thurmond Business Shelter. They kick a lot of people out, also Michael, and that make them have mental problems. There's a lot of people in Fredericksburg got mental problems because they don't have nowhere to go and to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. There are no other speakers signed up to speak. Is there any, are there any additions to the council agenda? Does any councilor wish to remove something from the consent agenda? Yes, Council Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull item B for a little bit of discussion, a question.
All righty. Then we will, I will call on you for item A.B.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item A.B. is a transmittal of the proposed fiscal year two thousand and sixteen Asphalt and Concrete Rehabilitation Program and Street List. I guess the question I would have is, and it's a question that I think I've asked most every year, and I'll give an example. Stafford Avenue took us a few years to, we did it in sections, to get it repaved. By the time we actually finished that project, the two first sections had already been cut up by Commonwealth Gas and whatever, and was totally patched. And the conversation we have is, as we do these rehabilitations, do we take the opportunity to either get a hold of Commonwealth Gas and/or look at what we need to do with water and sewer? Because right now, we've ripped up a lot of roads in College Heights, which will be patched for now. And might have been a little bit better if we'd gone ahead and planned it out where we can do the work, get everything done that needs to be done, and then pave them over, instead of within a year of having a section paved, have it sliced and diced and cut up and redug up. And I was just kind of wondering if we've gotten any new changes or anything to report with regards to potentially coordinating a little bit better? And I understand some of these things cannot be helped. A gas line goes, or whatever, you gotta do it. But we kind of have this conversation every year about better coordination with water, sewer, gas lines, getting whatever needs to be done and repave it, as opposed to repaving and then having everything sliced and diced. I don't know if there's staff can give any comment on that.
Mr. Cameron?
Public Works Director is not present tonight. The Deputy Director for Utilities is here. I don't know if Mr. Slessinger would like to try to respond to that question, or perhaps we could just hold that for two weeks when Director Fawcett will be here.
Thank you.
We will see that Mr. Fawcett gets that question. If there's nothing more to be pulled from the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six-zero.
We have one set of minutes, the regular session of April fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Move approval is submitted.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six-zero.
We move now to the City Manager Agenda. Item ten A is to authorize the City Manager to execute a contract with Wiley Wilson to provide engineering services for an evaluation of the sanitary sewer system. I will call upon Mr. Slessinger.
Good evening. In front of you is an agenda item requesting authority or approval to execute a contract with Wiley Wilson for a sewer study. You may be aware that, or you may not be aware, that we have found a positive correlation between rainfall, snowmelt, and the amount of influence coming to the sewer plant. We've sort of been aware of this. The staff has been aware of this for quite some time. We actually have some numbers. During one of the most recent rain periods, we had a seventy percent increase in flow to the sewer plant, which is indicative of the fact that we have infiltration and inflow into our sewer collection and transmission system. We have negotiated, talked with Wiley and Wilson to provide an engineering study of a portion of the city's system. That portion consists of basically Old Town, Mayfield, and a small portion of College Heights. There's a drawing attached to your package that shows the area under consideration. Hopefully, we will be able to identify the area or areas that contribute the most to our infiltration problem. We would then be able to prioritize those areas that need to be repaired or rehabilitated or replaced. That priority will, the factors that feed into that prioritization would be the condition, the scheduling, including what other items of infrastructure may be adjacent or right in the same area, and scheduling. We do tank scheduling. That's very important to us, as you are aware. We are in the process of repaving Williams Street through the Restaurant District, and we held off from that until after the snowfall and the Christmas season. So, I am requesting the authority for the City Manager to fulfill, to sign that contract so we could get started on this, identify the areas where we need to move forward with rehabilitation of the sewer system.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Slessinger? Yes, Council Delphi?
Yes, can you tell us what that study will involve? How it will affect residents in any way?
It should be not very disruptive. We will be doing everything underground as much as possible. When we do monitoring, it will be with inside the manholes. Installation of the sensors will be approximately forty-five minutes a manhole. The program consists of using existing knowledge to identify the general areas to be looked at and the specific locations to mount the sensors. The price, as quoted, includes eight sensors for three months, which is about what you need to anticipate enough rainfall to get meaningful data. You have to wait to have rainfall of sufficient intensity to elicit a response within the sewer. And so, we're, as a basis for this, we used eight locations for a three-month duration. So, it would be forty-five minutes to install each one of those. About every other week, we would spend maybe thirty minutes per manhole retrieving data from the sensors, and then thirty minutes when we're finished removing it. So, there should not be disruption. There will not be street closures, et cetera, certainly not in this portion of the program.
Thank you. Councilor Frye? No, Council Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is not a new topic. I think when I first came on council, we were always talking about the condition of the water and sewer system in the city. And thus, my question, I think you all have a pretty good idea of what the results are going to show you throughout this study. I mean, to be more precise, could you give me your assessment of the condition of our water and sewer system? How would you rate it?
I've been here a total of nine months, so I'm still learning the system, I will admit. You're not in horrible condition. You're not in wonderful condition. You're somewhere in between, and I know that's not a very satisfactory answer. There are portions of the system that are fairly new, appear to be in very good condition. There are other systems, both of the water and sewer, that beg attention, if you will allow me to use that as a descriptor.
So, I would, coming, looking down the road, we're still looking at some significant expenditures to bring our water and sewer system back up to a better level across the board.
That's correct.
That's, thank you very much.
Any further, yes, Council Frye?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. Question. How much of this work can be done by city staff or the Public Works Department now? Or do we need this special technology or these sensors?
I would, we would definitely need to rent the sensors. There is some expertise that I would prefer, and I would strongly recommend we get outside. I'm certainly not a hydraulic expert. That's one of the things that I would, I'm looking for Wiley and Wilson to provide. I have done, in a past life, I did the same type of I.N.I. tracking down, if you will. And in some places, we reduced I.N.I. as much as fifty percent, or reduced the flow in the sewer as much as fifty percent.
Okay. And the reason why I ask is, I was just looking at the almost $200,000 price tag. I was wondering, you know, if we could invest in technology ourselves and, you know, in the future, and maybe cross-train one of our Public Works guys, pay somebody maybe to assist? Just, just an idea, though, because $200,000 is, is $200,000.
It's $200,000. Yes, I agree with you. Well over half of this cost is the cost of rental of the meters.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Council Devine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Slessinger, I just had a basic question, but you talked about a three-month period, and that hopefully, within that time, we would have enough rainfall. Obviously, we don't want any more melting snow, but we'd have enough rainfall. If there's not, do we just extend it?
Well, our plan is to try and get these in in wet months. We certainly don't want to have our sensors in the ground September, or August, September, and October, which are the three lowest months of rainfall here. We'd either try and squeeze that in beforehand or wait until afterwards. So, we improve our chances of getting enough rainfall to draw reasonable data.
Okay. Too bad we didn't have it last week. We have plenty then.
Tell me about it.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, authorize the City Manager to execute a contract with Wiley Wilson to provide engineering services for an evaluation of the sanitary sewer system.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes five-one. Frye voting against.
Thank you. Item ten B, amending the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen by appropriating bond proceeds to purchase Public Works equipment. Ms. Licky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The resolution before you is an amendment to the fiscal year fifteen budget to appropriate bond funding that was part of the winter two thousand and fifteen bond issue. The city was able to get a favorable interest rate on a five-year term in order to purchase some large equipment to meet the operational needs of the department. This amendment appropriates $700,000 to purchase a replacement vacuum street sweeper, replacement packer trucks, and a flush truck that is used to clean the streets that has reached the end of its useful life. There is a detail on the equipment replacement in the memo, and I'd be happy to ask and answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Licky? Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I'll move amending the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen by appropriating bond proceeds to purchase Public Works equipment.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six zero.
Yes, Counsel Duffey? Yes, for the, the following 10C, D, E, and F, I will call on Counsel Duffey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I make this disclosure for the FY 2016 budget being considered by City Council. I am employed as an administrator by the Fredericksburg Public Schools, a group which will be affected by the adoption of the annual budget. I am able to participate in the budget process fairly objectively and in public interest. Thank you.
Counsel DeMae.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I also need to make a disclosure for the fiscal year 2016 budget being considered by City Council. I am employed as a teacher by the Fredericksburg Public Schools, a group which will be affected by the adoption of the annual budget. I am able to participate in the budget process fairly objectively and in the public interest. Thank you.
Counsel Frye?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. This disclosure is made for the FY 2016 budget being considered by Fredericksburg City Council. My wife is employed by the Fredericksburg Public Schools, a group which will be affected by the adoption of the annual budget. I am able to participate in the budget process fairly objectively and in the public interest. Thank you.
Thank you. We will proceed with item 10C, an ordinance on the first read setting the real estate tax rate at 82 cents per every $100 of assessed value of real estate for fiscal year 2016. Ms. Leckie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The proposed ordinance is before you on first read to adjust the real estate tax rate effective July 1 to 82 cents per 100 in valuation. This creates an additional $1,080,000 in funding to support the Fredericksburg City Public Schools and four new positions in the general fund necessary to operate the city. The increase to the median homeowner is estimated to be $72.90 annually, or $6.07 monthly. Just a reminder that the tax rate was advertised at 83 cents, and the council can adopt a tax rate lower than 82 cents, but cannot adopt a tax rate higher than 82 cents without another public hearing and re-advertising.
Thank you. Any, any questions or comments from Ms. Leckie? Counsel has had, I've lost track of the number of budget work sessions and a public hearing on this matter, and it is now before us for, for a motion.
I may, I'll make the motion. I move first read setting the real estate tax rate at 82 cents per every $100 of assessed value of real estate for fiscal year 2016.
Is there a second to the motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll second the motion for this discussion.
All right. Discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am going to support the tax rate at 82 cents, but I want to take a few quick minutes to talk about some concerns I have and make sure the public's aware of some of the situations we face, not only this year, but in the coming years. Frankly, this is going to be the first tax increase, and right now, unless something dramatically changes, we are going to face similar tax increases at least the next two years under the current plans for CIP projects and things that we, we all want to do. This year, and I voted against last year's budget, but this year, the majority of what's in this budget, frankly, is a lot of expenses that we've put off that we really need to get handle on and, and get done. I do have concern that we have kind of dropped the ball in regards to keeping salaries between city staff and the schools moving in the same direction. There are probably items on this budget, I still do not like us fully funding constitutional officers when the state has grossly failed in their responsibility to localities. And frankly, one of the biggest issues we are going to face, I'll tell you right now, is reduction in state and federal funding as we go forward. We've had, made great strides with matching funds for repaving roads, and we've been able to get a lot of work done. In the next three or four years, that is going by the boards, and we're going to be pretty much back on our own with regards to taking on, you know, those costs. And they are, as we all are aware, are, are not cheap costs for us to bear. Next year is going to be a real hard discussion with regards to where we go and what we do. Never agreed to the debate of taxes are too high or too low. It's never made any sense to me. At this level of government, everything we spend and we collect stays here locally and provides services. We're not into programming, we're not into foreign aid, it's money, you know, basically we are bureaucrats. It's water, sewer, police, fire, schools. There you go. That's pretty much what we do. And the issue to me is really a question of, what is the level of service the community wants? What does it cost? It's not an issue of whether our tax rate is higher or lower than somebody else's. It's strictly, does the money need to be spent? I think in this budget, could we have deferred things, a few things, and shifted some budget numbers around? Probably could have, could have dropped, and part of the discussions led by the Vice Mayor was to reduce the tax rate at least one cent, knowing what we're facing the next two years. But all in all, I've, again, have some issues with the budget itself, but I can understand why we're at, and basically, the money we're spending this year is going to needed costs and/or costs that hopefully will result in some savings down the road to the city, as well as providing more public safety to the general public. And of course, the biggest expense that we took on in this budget is with the schools, which we'll have a discussion on a little bit later. And I've, compared to what's going on to the north and south of us, the city has had a very good working relationship with schools, recognized them as a priority, and I think has shown a great leadership in maintaining and supporting our schools. Sometimes I think that we spend a little bit more on that and not enough looking at our own people, our own employees. And again, we'll, we'll talk about that more when we get to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kelly. Any further discussion? I think you said it best that this is a budget that focuses on necessary services and things that, if we kick the can down the road and don't do now, it's going to cost more later. I, I appreciate that. So if there's no further discussion, please cast your votes.
Motion passes five zero.
Stand.
Counsel Wilder, stand.
Item 10D is a first read. Excuse me. I'm sorry, Counsel Frye.
I wanted to make a comment.
Yes.
I've been doing my, my research. This is about the tax increase, the real estate tax rate increase. I just want the public to be aware that there is a real estate tax relief, and the reason why I'm discussing this now is because we just voted to increase the tax rate for real estate taxes. But for everybody who's not aware, citizens who may not know, or citizens who become a little older in age now, there are some resources out here that the city offers to the residents. You have to qualify age and residency and income are, are the major factors. So I won't go into detail on what those items are, but I will say to the public, whoever's paying attention, you can reach out to the Commissioner of Revenue in City Hall and get directed to the Real Estate Department, and they will assist you for folks who may have a hard time paying their taxes. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Counsel Frye. It's very good to remind us citizens of that. Item 10D is a first read establishing a bonus for city employees for fiscal year 2016. Ms. Leckie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The ordinance before you is a first read to establish a bonus for city employees for fiscal year 16. State code requires the authority to execute a bonus be established by ordinance. Therefore, this item is considered separate from the rest of the FY 16 budget. The bonus will be given in November at the rate of $1,000 for full-time employees, $750 for permanent part-time employees working more than 20 hours, and $500 for permanent part-time employees working less than 20 hours. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Leckie? Yes, Counsel Wilder.
I don't have a question. I'd just like to make a motion that we move forward ordinance 15, first read establishing the bonus for the city employees for the fiscal year of 2016.
Yes, Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We discussed in a work session, at our last work session, and I just want to make sure that you're aware of it, we had the option of converting this into a 1.5% raise for the city employees, which would make it a little bit more comparable to what we were doing with schools, for basically the same amount of money. And I, I understand the bonus helps some of the employees at a lower pay scale more than, than a raise would, but for upper scales, there's also the balancing issues of, you know, VRS retirement and everything else like that. Not thrilled with this. Again, we're kind of breaking with tradition in regards to dealing with our employees. I will support it, it's just on the understanding that we are supposedly going to be bringing a raise back next year for our employees, which means that frankly, with the tax rate what it's going to be, it means something else is going to have to give to make that work. But for now, I will go ahead and, and support this motion.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six zero.
Item 10E on the first read is amending the refuse collection water and sewer rates and charges for fiscal year 2016. Ms. Leckie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The ordinance before you establishes rate changes in the water and sewer funds that aim to generate 4% additional revenue in each fund annually. The rate increase is needed to sustain the fund and help cover the cost of major capital improvements over the next five years. The average homeowner will see a $2.37 increase in their bi-monthly water bill and a $2.52 increase in their bi-monthly sewer bill. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As per when we were talking about the new evaluation of our sanitary sewer system, we are looking at some significant costs, probably even beyond, beyond the five years we're, we're talking about now. But Ms. Leckie, I want to make it clear to the public that right now, as the plans are, we are be looking at similar increases, at least for the next two years, as the current plan. Is that not correct?
Yes, Mr. Whitley?
Yes. The short answer is yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further comments or questions? Please cast your votes.
Mayor, we don't have a motion.
Oh my goodness. I thought we had a motion.
No.
I have got ahead of myself. My apologies. Back up. We need a motion for ordinance 10E. Counsel Duffey?
I'll move first read amending the refuse collection water and sewer rates and charges for fiscal year 2016.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Whitley, did you have a comment?
Just a point of clarification, just for the sake of there not being any confusion, the city ordinance before you, even though the, the title on the agenda indicates that we're changing refuse collection fees, we are, we are not proposing that with this.
This is true.
This is only for water and sewer.
Thank you. Thank you for making that correction. There is no increase in refuse collection fees in this ordinance.
Thank you very much.
All right. Is everybody clear? Madam Clerk, you're clear on the motion? All right. Please cast your votes now.
Motion passes six zero.
Item 10F is a resolution on the first read of appropriating funds for fiscal year 2016 beginning January 1 through 2015 through June 30, 2016, and this for benefit of the listening public is the operating budget for the city. Ms., Ms. Leckie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item adopts a resolution to appropriate the fiscal year 16 operating capital budget on first read. The general fund budget totals $88,560,255, which includes all items in the recommended budget, less the increase to the tipping fee payment and refuse collection fee increase. Additions to the budget include $9,000 for the Midnight Madness program and $10,000 for tree pruning. The, the resolution included in the packet is tied to the 82 cent tax in, tax rate increase that was previously approved during, on first reading during this meeting, and includes an additional $1,089,000 in funding for the schools and the four full-time equivalents added to the city's operating budget. This resolution also adopts the Fredericksburg City Public Schools budget, the Department of Social Services budget, the Comprehensive Services Act fund, all of our enterprise funds and our fiscal agency funds, as well as the capital budget for fiscal year 16. This is a brief overview of all of the things included in the fiscal year 16 budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Yes. Counsel Duffey?
I'd just like to move first read appropriating funds for fiscal year 2016 beginning July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to put in an amended motion to reduce the transfer to schools by $50,000.
Second. We will vote on the amended motion first. Is any discussion? Counsel Frye?
Thank you. On the, on the amended motion, I'll speak to, with a reduction of $50,000 to the city schools, I will say, there, there are no guidelines to say how city schools use their Anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I know, I think, Mr. Cameron, I think he reduced what the request was, if I'm not mistaken, $400,000. Is that right? So with respect to the work that Mr. Cameron put in on the budget and, and coming with a number that was $400,000 from what was requested, I will, I will not support the amendment. And also, I mean, on, on the work that he did, but also the fact that there is no way to, to control where the money goes to. So a reduction of $50,000, we can't say what department or what phase of, of city schools will take a reduction. If we could, then I guess that would be up for discussion, but there's no way to dictate where the funds go, and that's my, my sole opposition to that. So that's it.
Yes, Vice Mayor Wilder?
I'd just like to add that I'm well aware of that, it's strictly up to the school board to distribute the funds as they see fit. It's, that's no problem for me at all. I'm not trying to control anything.
Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first point I would make is to Counsel Frye's point that the school budget was already, had been reduced during the discussions with the city manager. I would put to my colleagues that the amount of money that increases in our own departments, including police and fire, no way match, and we have put off and deferred costs to our own departments. We have in, pulled back, rightfully so, a major capital improvement for the schools, which is going to be a major increase for us cost-wise. Again, getting to the point of, do we need to spend the money, or can the money, any money be saved? I think the answer is yes. And the size of the budget, this is a relatively small amount, but it is, I think, worth making, based on all the discussions and all the reports that have been in our discussions with regards to the school budget. We all know what we're really talking about, and it'll be up, obviously up to the school board, but I think we need to put this in a context, you know, and, and the budget projections we've had up to this point, that we've done in the last two years, the school budget was always listed going up roughly 300, 350,000. It went up over $1 million this year, and it went over, well over $300,000 last year. And we've had the briefing from the schools, and we know what we're facing, and this is going to be a, become a bigger and bigger discussion as the years go forward. But right now, you know, when I look at the fact that I'm not giving city employees a raise, and I'm giving them a bonus, I know what some of my department heads, especially in the area of public safety, are looking for and need, and we are deferring those. You know, frankly, in the, in the grand scheme of things, I would, as originally proposed by the Vice Mayor, look at a little bit... the Vice Mayor, look at a little bit tighter, or a larger cut on this, because frankly, we are taking much bigger cuts in our own departments. And this, you know, it's been called token, okay? It's token, but it's still, it's a savings, and it's money that can be better used elsewhere. To that point, we've always talked about in all our discussions, that if we add something to the budget, we find an offset. We've now, if we vote this down, have taken that off the table. And I would ask then, if we are going to take this off the table, that anybody who put and added costs on the budget, knowing what we're facing the next two, three, or three years, if this motion goes down, to please make a motion to remove their costs from the budget. Thank you.
Counsel Devine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Kelly and Mr. Wethers have already kind of raised some points that I'd like to just discuss as well. This year in particular, we have, I think, worked hard to meet the school system's needs in a very broad way. We have moved forward, the renovation of original Walker grant to the tune of about $12 million, which does remove projects that we had previously identified as our priorities, including an additional fire station, which has been on the books for decades, Riverfront Park, which has been on, you know, the thought and wish list for decades. And not to say that original Walker grant does not need renovating. It does. But that wasn't our original plan to move forward with that this year. One of the reasons we are moving forward with it, the school board has asked that we do that, is to streamline and make more efficient the administration and the administrative offices for the school board, for the school system. And again, we are working hard to make that happen. So, and also, the raises versus bonuses, this is the first year that we have not really worked to achieve the parity between city employees and school employees, and I do struggle with that. I've heard from, you know, a number of city employees working for, well, our schools, but also our police and fire, and it does hurt morale to go down that road, and that concerns me. Not to say that there's not an employee within our school system or our city department that isn't working hard. Everybody deserves a raise. That'd be wonderful. In order to meet the needs of everybody, I do think this is the necessary step. And again, as Mr. Kelly pointed out, we're looking for offsets at some of our programs. A program has been proposed for our city schoolchildren that this would be an offset for, summer program, and I think that's well worth putting the money towards. And I think it's important to point out that we do represent, as council members, we represent all taxpayers, you know, not just, I mean, people who are involved in our schools, involved in other parts of our community. We represent everybody. And I am representing people that I've heard from, and I think that's important to point out, that, you know, in my comments throughout this budget season, it's not personal. It is not in any way, shape, or form really designed to point out anything other than I have strongly heard from many people in the community, and I feel very much obligated to see those comments through and to follow through with wishes of many of the taxpayers who we represent. So, thank you.
I'm going to be absolutely honest. I don't want to vote for this amendment. It goes against the grain for me to vote against the school's budget, when we've worked, we've always worked really hard, and the city manager and the superintendent of schools worked very hard to come in with the budget. I understand the reasoning behind this $50,000 reduction. I did not intend to vote for it, but let's call a spade a spade. We're looking at a 3-3 tie, and a 3-3 tie defeats a motion. And I do not want to jeopardize our budget, which is an excellent budget, well crafted, well, a good use of the taxpayers' money. I don't want to jeopardize the budget over this. So I will support the amendment despite the fact that I really don't want to. I'm just calling a spade a spade. Any further, yes, Counsel Duffy?
Thank you, and I appreciate your comments about the budget process. And in the grand scheme of things, I don't think we're talking about a big issue, and I hope that we can preserve the good working relationship between the schools and the city, the school board and city council. I do want to commend Mr. Cameron for the budget he fashioned for us, and I'm certainly inclined to support that original budget, but to the extent, as the mayor pointed out, that it would slow this progress down, I'm not opposed to supporting this either.
Okay. Any further comments? Any further discussion? Please cast your votes. We are voting on the amendment to reduce the budget by $50,000.
Motion passes 5-1. Frye wrote in, yes.
Now, we go back to the original motion. Since we defeated any amendment, we go back to the original motion to vote on the operating budget as presented. Now, we vote, we go back to the original motion as amended, which would be to vote on the original budget, less $50,000, transfer to schools. And because the original motion's been made and seconded already, it is available to vote on. Correct. Okay. So, Madam Clerk, do you have that? Am I straight? Okay. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Counsel Frye?
Now that the vote is done, can I comment?
You certainly may.
First, I'd like to say, it was nice working with you guys during this budget. It's been really interesting doing this. To Counsel Kelly's point, I did add, I did add a item to the budget. This is my first budget. I'm excited about what I added to the budget. I like the way he said, you know, I should find funding for it, pretty much, but that's pretty cool. But next year, I could just say, I'll be even more prepared to bring something to the table, and I'll show some money for it, or something, whatever we got to do in the city. But the debate was great over it, and I'm just excited. So now that the budget, that part is done, I just, I just want to say to my city of Fredericksburg that I'm very delighted to say that we're going to have a Midnight Madness program in Fredericksburg, and I'll elaborate on that in the future, but I'm excited. I'm going to take about 15 seconds to breathe to myself and back to the meeting.
Thank you, Counsel Frye. We did appreciate that, and I'm sure we have three members of the staff who are very glad that the budget is over. End of one season, the beginning of another. We have item 10G, issuing a conditional entertainment permit for the Alabama concert on Saturday, May 30, at Celebrate Virginia South. Mr. Whitley?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you this evening is a resolution that would grant a permit under City Code Section 22 for an outdoor music festival for the band Alabama at Celebrate Virginia Live on Gordon W. Shelton Boulevard on Saturday, May 30, 2015. The show is scheduled to begin at 5 and end at 10:00. Current projections are for 8,000 total attendees, including ticket holders and staff. City staff has reviewed the application and provided a lot of comments, which were incorporated into two revised applications, the most recent of one being April 21, 2015. The attached resolution includes several conditions, including receipt of a bond or letter of credit by the treasurer, receipt of a certificate of insurance, building permits, review of security personnel by the chief of police, and just an acknowledgement of maximum attendance at 8,000 attendees. Staff would like to acknowledge and appreciate the effort of the promoter and the landowner to put together the application for the permit. It's undergone a thorough staff review. I'm delighted to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Whitley? Do we have a motion? For a resolution?
Alabama concert on Saturday, May 30, 2015 at Celebrate Virginia South.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Sweet home Alabama. Okay. We will look forward to that one. Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The manager's report is included in your packet. Let me add two items of special interest. On April 21, the city closed on its most recent bond issuance. We issued bonds in the amount of $15,865,000 for a variety of capital projects. This was a direct bank loan through Cardinal Bank. The bonds vary in maturity from five years to 20 years. What is most remarkable about this deal is the interest rate. The interest rate on the bonds is 2.32%. During my career, which spans over 30 years, I've never seen rates this low. It's really quite unbelievable. And I think the city's strong bond rating, which is AA+ and AA2, coupled with the excellent market conditions, led to this exceptional bond rate. The second item I'd like to report on, also last week, the city received another unsolicited PPEA proposal from WC Spratt Incorporated. This is a proposal for the design and construction of two major projects in the city's capital improvements program. One, Caroline Street Water Improvements, and two, Greenbrier Drive Water Improvements. So what we'll do now, that we have received this unsolicited proposal from WC Spratt, we will follow the regular process of public notice and advertisement to solicit competing proposals from other firms. And that's, that's something that takes typically 45 days or so. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have about these matters or anything else in the manager's report. Don't have anything to report on the council calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Does any other member of this body have anything further to bring before us? If they do not, we are adjourned. Thank you.